...
Oh, yes.
... indivisible, with one reading in justice for all around. I'd like to thank you all very much and open the meeting at 6:30. By that clock, my clock is exactly 6:30. You know how much it is?
Not quite. 6:34.
6:34, sorry. We'll take an average. We're around there. Okay, and then the very first thing this evening is open time for the public. And I certainly would like to welcome the public. I also see that the Council on Aging is here. Hello, Mrs. Phillips. And she was the one, by the way, who taught me English. I have sort of a reputation here for seeing spelling errors and things in documents, if you ask some of these people.
She's not listening to you. She has spelling problems.
No, she was the one who taught me how to spell so well.
He drives us nuts.
He probably taught me.
Because he's a professional, and I know where he gets it from now.
Aren't you glad you said that?
It's a good word for "she away" behind this.
All right.
Oh, you're trouble.
That's what you're beckoning me to.
Okay. Some time ago. In any case, anyone here from the public who wants to say anything? If not, we'll move to the joint meeting with the Council on Aging. Nilda, as a citizen?
Nilda Cohen.
Sure.
And after our conversation last Monday, we both agreed that we should come and get an update. So it's sort of a mutual request from both parties. First, I want to clarify how this evolved. You know, we came to you when I approached Lowe, asking about the floor. And when we were going to move in, and here it is, the end of May, and the floor is done. However, there are other issues. I went to the April 19 meeting, which these ladies also joined. And that was a combined meeting between this wet floor as a building reuse. And it was my understanding that at that meeting, they were going to wrap things up and pay, you know, get the architect and contractor to finish up what was getting done, needed to be done. And everybody wanted this project finished. We didn't have much of an opportunity to ask questions at that meeting. So we left, and the following day, I sort of started thinking about these that had been brought up either in walkthroughs with Gary, with the board, in terms of things that we were noticing in the area that we had questions. But they weren't addressed. So at that meeting, Gary said that that colleague was going to finish whatever needed to be done. Ed wasn't there. Joe represented. He did a good job. But we didn't have, we didn't get the feeling that in which we thought the contractor was going to finish, that Ed had generously said, "We're going to do the appliances. Don't worry, ladies. We'll get you in there." And that was fine. So it seemed like we were being put aside again. So I decided to make a few funnels. And one of the funnels I made was to the East Hampton Senior Center. And as a result of their kitchen, and they're in a facility that they moved in, so really they didn't keep rushing. They got what they got. But she said to me, this was not the director, she was not Hunt, the person that sort of handles the reception, and she does the senior volunteers. She said, "I would suggest you talk to your Board of Health. They are really tough on coverage issues and regulations." And that's what started this. I sent an email. I sent an email to Diana Versus and an email to the Board of Health and said, "What are the requirements?" It was a simple question. What are the requirements for us to run this kitchen in terms of what we plan to do with it? And that's when he came back. So it was Sunday, Monday. Tuesday, he walked through with Jennifer and came to see Diana.
This last Tuesday?
Uh, no.
Couple Tuesdays, not this past. I think it was about.
Right, right. And so, as you know, there are more issues. There are issues that, first of all, he said he hadn't seen the plans. Second, that he hadn't signed off on it. So he needed plans. Diana, I think, is going to get him the latest plans. So that's what started this sort of new track of what, who has all been answered and ultimately need to be addressed and resolved. So that's where we're at. We were given, I've sent an email with a 13-page questionnaire. The board of, our board, met on the 26th this Thursday. We answered as many questions as we thought we were able to answer. I came down and told Diana that we had done it and that the town, the officials, and the Board of Health needed to look at the questionnaire and also fill in some of the questions, but that we were not helping the process. So where it is now, Jennifer didn't have a chance to talk with Josh today, so maybe Diana has an update on that. So that's where we're at in terms of the kitchen. In addition to that, there were other questions that we had. Now, I'm hoping I have copies. I didn't announce them at this meeting.
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Collins, you should get one too.
Is it all, is it all the same?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, that's what Diana said.
Oh, it's okay. She'll be writing out the copies. So you did get that questionnaire, obviously, from Josh. Then you and I talked about, when we had a conversation last week, also Tuesday.
Well, we had a special meeting Thursday just to address that because your point to us was, "We really want to move on this. Let's get it done sooner rather than later." Even though the Board of Health had told me that they weren't scheduled to meet till the end of the month, and you said, you know, "I'm sure we can do something earlier." So that's where that stands.
Well, I think the latest from Diana is that the health board will be meeting at the end of the month, that that is their meeting date. And they'll take a look at the kitchen and do whatever they have to do to get what they call a variance. And as soon as that, those steps are taken care of, then it's move-in ready. I mean, appliances can be put in.
Well, yeah. And I can speak to that.
That's about the kitchen. That's where we are.
Well, the kitchen is separate to ours, so I think that...
But in terms of moving in, once you get that health variance, you are able to move in. Appliances will be put in and be moved in, so that's...
Based on, based on the questions and the guidelines about how the kitchen's going to be used and the number of people.
Right, right. Based on getting a successful health variance, so that it can be a commercial kitchen. You know what we found out? That because this is a commercial building, that de facto makes the kitchen a commercial kitchen. That's what we learned.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
That's sort of a new piece of information.
Okay. So I guess what I would say in terms of, we're stating that there's been numerous minutes and mouths that say it was never meant to be a commercial kitchen. So let's clarify what commercial, from your understanding and us. Commercial is that everything would have to be laid out in terms of, we're addressing the public, and the number of people would also be a requirement in terms of how many, if we were expecting 100 people, that would be different than what we're doing. You know, 25 to 60 is what we're looking at at any given point. And then we would have a commercial dishwasher, because the volume would dictate that you have a high-speed dishwasher, so that you don't have one of the volunteers staying, you know, three hours after the luncheon, just to watch a dishwasher run its household level cycle of an hour, seven minutes. So what's requiring a commercial kitchen?
Right. But that's just a point of fact, that apparently, because this is a commercial building, it's a commercial...
Right. It's deemed a commercial kitchen, not from somewhat what you said, but it's really based on the fact that we're serving the public food in a commercial building. So it's inherently commercial. But you can get a variance so that you can adjust the kitchen, so it adapts to the things that you're talking about, the menu, how many people you're serving, you know the list that Josh gave you. So basically, what the Board of Health is looking at doing right now is basically giving you a variance to operate the program that you'd like to operate.
So just to point out a couple of these things that, you know, you can clearly read on your own. We are raising these as points that we have questions around, particularly with the population that we're serving, the population that's going to be using the kitchen. And therefore, if, I mean, the kitchen's in, we realize that, and these conversations should have taken place, you know, over a year ago. But that does take away from the fact that we have a kitchen that has limitations. And that's not to speak that about the number of people we're serving in terms of about the function. And the kitchen cabinets and upper cabinets are a problem. The, Caroline, we can get to the first shelf, right?
Yeah.
Right. But above that, you can't. So what do we do? Do we get steps, stools, a ladder to reach, to utilize that space, so that now we're exposing the people that are in there to potential accidents? I mean, we all know that we would, we would need to eliminate any potential exposure. And so I talked to Ed, and I said, "Who cabinets can move down?" Well, they might be on one side, but on the other side, where the oven or the stove is, there are restrictions because of the vent for, and that's, you know, something else in terms of whether it needs an outside vent or some of the bird recycleable vent. So that's, I check in terms of general information for activities around kitchens, and was there any discussion around when we're going to reach them? This is how it's labeled in terms of a population that you're building a kitchen for. What are the people that are going to be using? What are their needs? So that's something that I would ask the architect. But there again, I was going to ask you. The sink isn't different, it's a problem. We have double sinks, of which one should be a deep sink, because we need pots, we need rooms with pots that don't have a sink in them. According to the Board of Health, you should have a three-tier, three design sink and a separate wash area. That's a problem.
Is that part of the variance, though?
It's unclear. The one thing that is unclear about is the sinks for the variance. I think all the other things that are workable, but I don't, I think the two-bay sink could work, I mean, the sinks that they have in there, but there may need to be a separate hand-washing sink.
The double sink now is only six inches deep.
Right.
How long can it last?
Right. And that would be a problem, Jess. And that, that's right, exactly right. That the code says that, or to allow for the variance, the sink is still supposed to accommodate the largest pot that would be washed.
And then the other one is not enough workspace, which we went through, Caroline had her team in terms of how she works, how her volunteers coordinate their different tasks. If you take something from the stove, the nearest place to place that after it comes off the stove is the counter space across the width of the kitchen, because there's no room near the width sink there. So we talked about getting a portable type, roll type, and all.
Sure.
And so if we put that in the middle to reduce the distance so that you're not carrying something hot, then you're also affecting the accessibility of anybody that would be in a wheelchair if that were the case. Now, you know, we're not going to exclude people that have limitations from helping. So the other part of it is, we're also adding, even though we wouldn't have a break, I personally have news of them, I think that when you have something in the kitchen, it should be nailed to the floor. You know, who knows that something could happen? So that's something that we needed to point out to you. The dishwasher doesn't need to be a commercial, oh, I'm sorry, needs to be a commercial level. Eliminate what you have now, and if you don't want to give us a commercial dishwasher, then get us a sanitizer, which also helps in terms of meeting the Board of Health guidelines with regard to, you know, decontaminating of dishes and utensils, so that you don't have any like, a superb administrator of this program. She, she really is very committed. We need to, and also the town, we need to reduce exposure that you might have. So East Hamptons, that's what they elected to do. Rather than having to be commercial, they have most of their food preparation, for dish, from high and down. And by doing that, they still have some cleanup that they're able to address it by this sanitizer. And I don't know what size they are, I don't know what they cost, I don't know what's involved. But flooring is a concern, only for the standpoint of the border. We're not sure whether that tile, once it gets wet, is it something that we have to safeguard that activity area so that we have pets? I know that some tile floors, they need to be wiped immediately because you can easily slow. Does anybody have any questions?
May I?
Sure.
Mr. Chair? I'm going through the list, and thank you very much for all your hard work, ladies. And it's not in vain, okay? The architect designed this, okay? And he thought it would fit the senior citizens' needs. However, as we're moving in, we're seeing we have problems. Because my father-in-law lives with us, he's 90, okay? So he has the same, he's got more problems than you probably, because he can barely walk, okay? And you'll meet him someday. But from what I can see, the town can chip away at these things, but some of the things that I can see, they're of the utmost importance, if I may. And this is only my opinion, okay? Is the upper cabinets too high? I can see that's a problem right now. And I don't think that would be a bad fix, but we can look at it, as far as I'm concerned. I'm only speaking for me, not the whole select board. Okay, all of these other things, up until the toilet bowl needs to be higher, that's a good thing, because I just had two artificial knees put in, and I had one hell of a time with one that I had to squat down with, okay? So that's probably of grave concern. And also, the automatic door opener for the wheelchair accessibility for the bathroom. I can see that being a big thing. Yeah, okay, but, and then what about a panic button? That's good. These are things the architect failed. He had to do a whole building. This is, it's a pretty good-sized project, and he had to try to remember everything for everybody, so...
This is going to take away the committee, your involvement.
No, no, no.
Look, I know that these could be missed, but I think that in looking and having our conversations, this is the time for us to bring it.
I think it's a wonderful thing you're doing, bringing it up, and I appreciate it. But the things I can see, and I'm only one of five, is the upper cabinets, the automatic door opener for the wheelchair accessibility in the bathroom, and the toilet seat, that's a real hot one. It's got to be higher. And then a panic button. All the others, I think we can chip away at as time goes by. And I really appreciate myself, you bringing this to our attention, because we want this to be very good for you and very usable. But I think those, those four items are like, they should be done on a priority, as far as I'm concerned.
Talking about the automat, to get into the bathroom, should there be one at the door also? To open the door, so they can come in with their wheelchair?
I'm not familiar with that code, but it sounds like a common sense thing to me. It sounds like that would be a good thing.
The main entrance of the senior, I think, the vestibule, and whether there's one door to come into the vestibule, and then there's another door.
See, we've got to look at these things too, and we've got to say to ourselves, okay, in front of the front doors over here, we have stairs. So how do the doors open? Is it going to push the person downstairs in a wheelchair? We don't want that. So we've got to really, we've got to look at these stuff, but I can see that being a priority. And I can see your concerns over it, and I agree with you, simply because I learned all these things from my father-in-law, living with us, he's 90, okay? So I'm very sensitive.
Thank you, Doug. Sure. So with the perfect vision of hindsight, if we had had, you know, your input earlier, it would have been great. We don't have. What we do have right now is a bit of a mess in terms of the situation. From my perspective, looking at the highest priority, I think, is to get the Board of Health to sign off on the variance, because we can't really, my understanding is, we can't mechanically install things in that space until such time as we have the building permit. So that would be also along with what Mr. Blanchard is saying, what we would need to do is very mixed steps, and then do what we can as quickly as possible with each of these. And I do recall that we did talk about a panic button, with the lock system when the guys were here.
Many of these items were in the original kitchen design. Some of these things were taken out or changed because of the finances, is my understanding, from the committee. The committee, the committee did not have enough money to build the kitchen as it was designed originally. So one thing happened, is they downsized it to be more of a residential appliances and those items. And then some of these things, not, not the cabinets being too high, but in terms of, you know, there was going to be a commercial dishwasher. In terms of the toilet seat, that might be an ADA issue, that I think it has to be a certain height so somebody can push off of a wheelchair and get onto the toilet seat. So I think that's...
Too close to the meeting room, so...
Again, I mean, it was, it was designed to be ADA accessible. And then the wheelchair, I mean, all the doors in the building, we've talked about putting the openers on. I mean, that's something that we've had requests for, for the front door as well. And the panic button, there is a button out here. Are you talking about a panic button on the outside door coming in?
Well, one of my questions was, where, I think there's a mirror that the office staff can see who comes in through that entry, the main entry.
Yes.
The door here, you know, is a buzzer.
Yes.
I'm still sort of unsure as to what was envisioned when you have the office staff, office staff in an office that they don't have the visual ability to see what's going on in the open area.
Yeah. So a panic button, I mean, that's, you know, somewhat like a doorbell. So I mean, that's something that might be doable. But to be honest, right now, I mean, the finances are the key. We don't, you know, we just, we'd have to, like, basically putting this on a list and doing it over time would be the only option unless we can figure out a funding source.
A video monitoring system would be great. We did talk about, for example, if you were here in the Council on Aging and the offices were closed and you only had one exit, you have to have more than one exit by code and by common sense. So we did talk about that with the queues.
Yes, there'd be, there's an emergency exit over here, yes, yes.
There's that, but that would be, my perspective in this as well, is that we are somewhat tied up by the financial situation. So I'm not sure what your opinion might be as a committee or as a council. Would you be willing to work with us on getting the first steps, which is the variance? And then we will just, all we can do really is promise to do our best to do these things as they come up.
What would be your highest priority, I would say?
Right. And some of these things, I mean, we can, we can certainly, you know, look at the rust, the rust around the windows, like, some of these things, you know, yeah, they're more like maintenance issues, and we need to, yeah, we need to...
What has happened to the building, the truck, and it's been opened and how things are...
Right.
And I know that you've had some things touched up and repaired, so...
Yes, yeah. I mean, the ceiling tiles missing in the storage area, you know, that was, if you recall, none of our closets have ceilings, or most of them don't have ceilings. It was a budgetary decision made during the project. So none of the closets in the building have ceilings. So that's, it's not missing, it just wasn't put in. Don't look up.
When we designed this, I was on a building use committee, I was privileged to be on that. Now, we had to work under certain, very stringent financial conditions. So our objective was to build this town hall, okay? How do I say this? As reasonably and as functionally as possible within a certain budget. And we had to cut an awful lot of real nice things that everybody would have wanted, but we can't afford them at present. Maybe in a year or two, we can do some of these things. And all the offices have the same concerns you do, only different things. You know, they'd like more cabinets in the assessors' office, they have this and that, blah, blah, blah. But we have a functional building that we came into with a good heating plant and air conditioning and water, and it's clean and pretty, blah, 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 and it's very functional. And we can build as we go, but we got an awful, awful lot from our buck. And I'm sorry to say, some of these things had to be left out to get us in. Do you follow me?
I fully understand your position. There's no doubt in my mind that that was a process that people went through cautiously, and they had to cut things up. It's life.
Right.
However, our position is that we will not compromise safety. We will not compromise function in doing what we have promised that we could do in this new area, because it's been one way.
Well, we promised you a place to meet and so on and so forth, but we didn't promise you the Taj Mahal, because we knew we couldn't get, we couldn't give it. Why promise somebody something when you know you're going to lie? You don't do that. You say we'll give you as much as... We give you as much as we can, as the budget will allow.
Did you know that building the Taj Mahal bankrupted the Indian Treasury and the Emir at the time was thrown out of office?
Okay, get ready, guys.
It started a revolution in India.
Okay.
Nilda, what would be your priorities on this? What would you want to start first, in terms of saving?
Well, this is what we, this is what we discussed about, what was it, Thursday, we had a meeting tomorrow morning. I think we need to have another conversation, but I also asked that the select board have a conversation with the people that were supposed to be cooperating some of these lightbreakers, the cabinet height and the sink. I think that was a miss.
So is the sink a requirement, the different...
Possibly.
Yes, the sink, the sink, again, the original design had the, I believe, the bigger, the three-bay sink with the separate hand-washing unit. So that was, again, downsized. But the issue now is that you'd have to really change part of the structure to accommodate the three-bay. You know, now you have the two-bay and the one, and I don't know how, you know, easy that is to do. Now you're talking about changing cabinetry.
Well, it's really the cutout.
The cutout.
It's a cutout, so it's not the upper, so we would lose, and we know this, we're going to lose what little space we have, counter space, but, and the wash, hand washing is not something we raised, it was raised to us then. So that was a new one to us. But I think that as we, my hesitation is sort of, looking at this project and saying, "We'll get things done later," makes me nervous, because I think that... Because I think that it's gonna be difficult to, what you just raised, Diana, in terms of cost, or the, it's gonna be hard to do and getting it done right the first time. And I think that, you know, the committee make that decision, they're responsible, because the architect said, or the contractor said, you know, it was a change order.
Right, it was a change order.
And we followed what we were planning on, but, okay, so we'll talk about this, and then we'll have to come back to you. As far as the variance, you're gonna have to deal, and I think would be helpful to us, that Diana have this contact with Josh and get...
And I have that.
What he's telling us and what you guys are agreeing to in this questionnaire, and then we'll get it back, and then see what that presents for the 28th meeting.
Yes. Yeah, that's what we're, we're basically working toward that. Josh has the plans now, we're working on getting the material data sheets, so there's a short, a fairly short list. You've provided so much information, so that was useful, like the menu, and so now we just have to get the couple items, and then on June 28th, the Board of Health will meet and discuss it.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something humorous?
Please. It's not about the show.
I have, this is gonna really distract you. I have a son and daughter who I happen to love and adore very much. Now, my little girl, daddy's little girl, as they always are, when she was little, she used to go around when it was Christmas or her birthday and they'd give her money. And remember Lysa Manelli, money, money makes the world go round? She'd sing that. And she was very, very cute. We only have so much money to go around, and we're gonna try our very best to satisfy everybody. That's the moral of the story. Okay? But we got your concerns, and we hear you loud and clear, and they're very, very valid concerns. Okay?
Ed, you have a hand, Ed Colly?
Quiet. I wanna address everything based on history and how things evolved. First of all, we never anticipated to have a kitchen in here. And I have exceptions, but I personally feel that this was never designed for a kitchen, because you can't have it. The system we have here is for an office building. We barely made the ability to have a septic system for this building, for an office building. We did not have a commercial kitchen in there, because if we could put a commercial kitchen in there, that half, that building would've had rental space under a ramp that would receive to do a feasibility study and to set the original steps of it. So, that being said, the architects on day one knew that that wasn't the needed commercial kitchen. We are restricted on how many meals you're gonna have here. Limited, not like you're gonna have 300 meals a week. You are really gonna be limited to a real small number, because the system will not handle it. And Doug, this goes back, the way me and you first debate, you and I were on this, that was a big one. Now, I have a problem with the Board of Health coming out at the ninth hour. The reason why I have a problem with the Board of Health coming in at the ninth hour, they were part of this discussion from day one. They were brought in, they approved the plans, whether it was three different regimes ever in there or not, they approved the plans, they knew the losing dogs involved in the kitchen. But that being said, I'm watching, understand, there are issues about having meals in kitchen on full-time use here, because we don't have sewer, that's all we have. Okay? The next thing I can tell you, we talked about these things, I think there was a original idea for an eighteen sink in there, but you lost that when they became wheelchair accessible sinks, because you couldn't have it down. And I think that's what happened, why you didn't have an eighteen inch sink, you had a smaller one, because the wheelchair was put under the sink and worked. So, that was an issue. I'm not speaking to the board, the research committee, I'm just telling you what I've heard over the last seventy years, being here in the office, private home area. Now, I was originally going in there to finish all these loose ends in the kitchen and things that had been done. Right now, it's time to hold until everybody gets the game plan together, and we'll go out and do what we have to do. But, the scope of services now sounds like it's getting a lot more than what we anticipated. I mean, we had people lined up, and what got me upset is the health agent came in at the ninth hour and made some restrictions, never talked to anybody, been in the building for six months and hasn't come out to take a look at that. And shame on him for that, and this comes out to last minute. And as Diana was very upset, it called us off, that this is not the way we run a business or an operation with somebody calling a monkey wrench right in the workplace. They need to get involved and to inform people what their wishes are, what they need, the requirements are, what we have to do to get these people in the building. Right now, once you get it resolved, it's on paper, what you want us to do, we'll come back and tell you what we can do with that.
Thank you very much, sir. So, with respect to the game plan, then, again, as I keep saying, then, this variance needs certainly to be completed and signed off on. We will certainly do everything we can as, absolutely as soon as possible to do that. At the same time, it sounds like we need to have a written list of those restrictions, which are required as a result of the limited septic system here, so you can do your planning. Additionally, we need to understand what was done and what isn't done, and just almost a punch list, if you will, and just start doing those.
Especially the safety, right? Especially the things you consider safety as.
That's separate to the function of the kitchen, because what Josh is referring to and what he suggests is separate to us.
Well, some of the function also...
You can't use the kitchen until he tells us.
Right, but it also relates to its ultimate usage patterns too, then, as well. So, I think we need to get more to help.
And we can probably use that, if you wanna get some, you know, to talk about the restrictions of the septic system, which I think is a good idea, because there's, as Ed's brought up a couple times, there, there seems to be some, but it isn't clear, so we should have, if we could put them in writing, and then, you know, you're gonna put together your preparation plan and your food, you know, your food service plan, we can make sure that they, they can coexist.
And once we have those guidelines, then we're gonna set schedules, determine what we can do, you know, monthly, or weekly, or monthly.
Right.
Absolutely, right.
Okay.
So, we have some planning.
All right, so, is that a good stopping point for this discussion? Is that all right?
Very good.
All right, so, okay.
Appreciate your time.
We appreciate your time and hard work. Thank you.
Do you feel updated?
Pardon?
Do you feel updated?
Oh, yeah. I updated you.
I feel updated.
All right, thank you very much.
This is really good, Melinda. Thank you for putting this together too, because we can work on this.
All right.
Thank you.
You're the special chair.
I did.
Good to come. I see that the library is here. Are you on the agenda?
So, um...
Are you here for the public or his library?
They're, they're, you here for the finance committee?
Yeah, we're here for the finance committee.
There's no problem, yeah.
So, we're moving on then to David Kielson.
Yeah, let's, even though the finance committee doesn't have a quorum this evening, so we can't meet with them and do our end-of-the-year transfers, but if David could just come up so we could, I'd like to just go over kind of where we're at with you, so you understand we're in a, feels to me like the most precarious end-of-the-year position that we've been in since I've been in, been here. Not to alarm you. So, basically, we have, right now, I mean, our overages just today, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to make copies, but we're close to about, we're about 28.5 right now for our overages. Now, that doesn't include winter roads. We are expecting to get some type of reimbursement for the emergency money for winter roads, so hopefully that will help offset that. Right now, when we're looking at the budget and we're looking at available funds, it's very limited.
There's no...
I was looking at a budget that we could look at.
Do you have, did you bring copies of the budget? Here, let me, let me give you, I don't, can you just take that? Do you have a copy of that? You know, I'm gonna copy that. Okay, I'm sorry. You know what, let me, I'm sorry, excuse me. I, I would ask if you would mind taking Ken Elstein now on your action list? He's here just for a quick update on the aggregation for the electricity program and for you to sign the agreement, and then I will make copies of that for you, and we can discuss more.
Can you have him come up or sit at that table by the mic, if that's all right?
You mean, I'm gonna miss Dave?
Yes.
You can stay if you want.
I'm surprised you called him up, actually.
They wanna put you on the hot seat.
You. You mean, you have no billboard tonight?
No. Okay, so, we have here, all its glory coming tonight, the application of the several towns that are involved in the municipal aggregation of electricity plan. So, what can we do for you? Are we gonna approve that?
Well, sign it. I looked it up, I was last here exactly six months ago yesterday, and asked for and received your support for this to be before the special town meeting in December, and that passed there. And this is the next step, which is an application to the State Department of Public Utilities for electricity aggregation, in which we will expand our service, which is now town governments throughout the five counties, to residents and small businesses. Seventeen towns have signed this application, hoping it'll be the eighteenth.
Okay. What's been your experience, if any, in these, in aggregate purchasing on the relative percentages of cost savings?
We haven't done it yet.
You haven't done it yet, but are you aware of any other towns or courts or anything?
Yeah, the two other, the two other entities that have done this are Cape Light Compact, which is the 21 towns in Barnstable and Dukes Counties, commonly known as Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard, and they've been doing this since the year 2000. And they have typically six-month contracts for which something like 80% were cheaper than N-Star, which is their big utilities prices. So, you don't, as with Hampshire Power, we're not perfect, we're not better every month, but they've been better most months. And in the case of, the only other entity that's done this is City of Marlboro since 2006, and they were, they've had better rates three-quarters of the time. Initially, we will, as per the legislation, the first contracts will be lower than the basic rate in effect at the time. I explained in the application that that's something, this is a special problem for us here in the valley compared to the other two entities that have done it, because some of our towns are Womiko, and some of the towns are National Grid, and they have different prices. And I did a comparison of the prices of the two utilities over the last 10 years, and there's never been a time they've been the same. Half the time, one is higher, half the time, the other is higher. And in order to guarantee that we won't go live unless we're at a better price, if the price comes in in between, then it means we could only convert initially the towns that are in the one that's better. So, at the moment, National Grid is higher, Womiko is lower, so if we came in halfway between, we would have to convert to National Grid towns and wait until the prices changed in order to get better than Womiko.
Do you know where Womiko is buying their power, other than their coal facility?
All of this, yeah, but the, under the deregulation in 1997, all of the basic rates are based on competitive bidding.
Right, through the ISOs.
And then they're passed through. We're also a member of ISO New England, which is something that neither Nash, neither Cape Light nor Marlboro is. We, we've been providing lower prices to the roughly 102, 103 towns and school districts, and since we've gone live, which is 2006, we expect that our track record will be good, good enough to justify it, because we expect that over any reasonable length of time, we will... We've begun working, I guess, since I last spoke to you with Energy New England, which is a consulting firm owned by, oh, half a dozen or so municipal light companies, there's only five or six in Massachusetts and one in Connecticut. And they've been giving us a very, they've been very, they've been giving us a very good guided tour of how prices work, and it is incredibly complicated industry. Energy generally is very complicated, and, you know, gasoline prices are now down, what, 25 cents in the last few weeks. Let's hope that continues.
Yeah, they've gone down, right.
Yes. Well, and we'd love electricity prices to go down too.
Sure, okay, all righty. Well, thank you for that kind of update, a little bit of backstory on this. I believe everybody except for you, Jackie, is here when we approved this originally, a town meeting approved it. What we need now is a motion to sign, unless anybody has any further questions.
Second.
Any further discussions with respect to signing or agreed to membership in the 18th town, so we will be the 18th town? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, the next step will be, if I may, later this month, later in June, we will be filing with State DPU, it'll probably be a multi-month process as they digest it and consider it, there'll be at least one public hearing, and I've encouraged them to hold it here rather than in Boston. And from there, we'll proceed, and I'm hoping that power will be turned on for at least some of the customers in the valley later this calendar year.
Okay, appreciate that. I certainly agree with you that the markets are very, very complicated.
This will give us all access to the wholesale markets in a way we've never had the opportunity before.
And we get a lower price because there's volume?
That's a big piece of it, and the fact that we're, we'll be going out together, it's, like I said, it's complicated. It'll also help that we have the suppliers use a more accurate profile. For example, residential rates are typically the same for everybody. In fact, for National Grid, I'm a selectman in Belch Town, we're on National Grid, they using this, they, they basically take an approximation of everybody. So, we in Belch Town account for the same as people in the east and the north of the state. By being more accurate, we should be able to get...
Okay, so, I don't need many copies of that.
Yeah.
Well, did they sign one or two?
They just signed one. You wanna just...
You didn't have a duplicate signature page.
So, what should I do, send this back to you?
Yeah, you just send me a copy back?
Absolutely.
I trust you. Thank you. And save me from running all the way across the building again.
Thank you. So, back to the end-of-the-year transfers.
Yes, so let me hand these out now. So, this is the packet we had prepared for tonight in belief that the finance committee was gonna be meeting.
Do we have the authority, based on the town meeting, to appoint people in lack of a quorum? Is that in effect now for the finance committee?
Well, you can appoint some people until the next annual election, but in terms of right now, I don't know if that's...
It's been approved by the zoning bylaw, or, not the zoning bylaw, the...
Attorney General.
Bylaws?
Yes, it's approved by law.
But technically, we have the authority, don't we?
Well, I, I think at this point, it's a moot point, because the people that were here from finance have already left. There was only one person, or two people, so they've gone, so...
Okay, all right.
So, what you see in front of you, the list that you have, you also have a copy of the most recent expense report. So, basically, all of the items in here are negative numbers in this report. There's one negative number under veteran agent expenses, however, we're awaiting a reimbursement for that, so we don't, we hadn't included that. And then, the two numbers that are additional numbers besides the, one of them isn't a negative number, and that's the library expenses. And you can see I wrote requested, see attached. And then the other one is a worker's comp bill that's pending. So, that's all in your documentation. But as you can see, if we were to make these transfers tonight, they total 28,567. This does not include any of the winter roads issues we talked about. This does not include any of the winter roads issues we talked about, or I mentioned earlier. It doesn't include fire department expenses, police department expenses, building inspector expenses, Board of Health expenses. Because at this point, they, those are, there may be bills pending, but a lot of that was projection. So we were trying to take out an approach that we would do everything that was in the negative now, and then, you know, we'd have to come back in a couple of weeks and relook at it. But the problem that we're facing is that we don't have a lot of available funds. If you look at the expense report in front of you right now, you can go through and see what's available, and it's fairly limited. The one place that we need to be more certain about is the school. So, you know, we will research that. But just so you know, I mean, it's daunting. The other thing is that we do have free cash. We talked about free cash. We do have $42,000 left in free cash. Of course, that would have to go to a special town meeting, but that is something that we do have.
Do you have any idea?
Or 48, 48.
Yeah, 48.
Do you have any idea how much is here in small amounts? How much is available on the expense report?
In these small amounts? Very little. I mean, you know, we went through, I mean, like 1,000 here, 400 here. But it's, until we get more information from the departments. I mean, we're certain about a couple of things, but it's very minor.
But I mean, are we estimating it at 5,000, 10,000, 15, something?
Available monies?
Yeah.
Well, in the small amounts, it could add up to maybe 10 or 15. And then the school, you know, we have a large amount left in vocation tuition in the elementary school appropriation itself. If you remember last year, they did give back a significant amount of money. But we, we're uncertain about that at this point.
I could add a couple of things. I guess we're at a point now where we can analyze the expenditure side sort of a little better than the revenue side because of some items that we're waiting to see what they are. But the two obvious accounts that are likely to generate some excess funds, I would say would be both tuition and group health issues. Right now, group tuition is $170,000 left in the account. And I think the last bill that we received, I get quarterly bills. I think the last bill that we received was somewhere in the neighborhood of, well, not how much, but it was up through April 15th or so. So there's probably two months left. And it's certainly not going to be $170,000 that we're going to spend. We spent $123,000 in the last bill. So I'm thinking that that might be the final bill. It'll be somewhere in that neighborhood. And then we would have for 40 or $50,000 just in that one spot alone. In group health, we have $146,000 there. The, our new cheapest.
No, we have 89.
Pardon?
We only have 89 after this bill, after this month's bill.
In which bill?
In group health. Can you turn that group health?
Yes, yes, yeah, right.
89.
So, but still, a big one, so.
Well, we have one more bill to pay, though. So we took 15 out of it, or you think?
Yeah, just, I mean, as a very low ball, as far as I'm concerned. Donna said that she's comfortable with that. I suspect that it'll be more. And going on that, of course, the Finance Committee isn't here, so we can use their whole reserve fund if we want to, tonight.
Yeah, we didn't, we weren't planning to do that tonight, just because we didn't know if they would have.
We still have $31,000 left in our account.
In reserve?
Yes. $31,000.
So Dave, what do you think is the best course of action at this point? Just to hold off, and we can't really do anything without the Finance Committee, anyway?
Or using the reserve fund, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, we can do that. But I would love to see that this is accomplished tonight.
But you can't do that with the Finance.
But you can't do that with that. All right, well, then I think that we need to schedule a return, I think, in two weeks or something.
Yes, yeah.
And accomplish that. As I said, I thought that they're going to be here. And I'm not sure what happened.
They didn't accomplish a quorum, or didn't achieve a quorum.
Okay. Well, that's the best we can do, it looks like. David, something else?
Yes, I'd just like to verify something that the administrators had said. And talking about the shortage of the police department, those aren't projections. And with the police department shortage, it's basically an actual cost that the department already incurred. I had supplied the Finance Committee with documents, bills, and receipts to justify the unexpected expenses that occurred in a total of $11,000 a year. Police department is out of expenses. So a lot of projections, those are real world numbers.
But David, will that, could that change, though, between now and June 30th? I mean, could there be?
Absolutely, it could. I had two cars come out of services this week with brake problems. And they're taking, putting one back on the road, they're taking the rotors and the brake, used brake pads off of old crews that we have at the hardware department. Keeps it, you know, no cost on that in there. But another car went down this weekend with brake problems again. And, you know, I had to charge brakes through Van Auto to get that back on the road. So, you know, it's only going to get worse. Plus we have May's fuel bill and the June fuel bill to contend with.
So those aren't projections, but real numbers. However, the projections could be worse.
David, the number that's here is $761.
Oh, there's two numbers, about 1,700 in all equipment and maintenance?
Okay, so it, so that, those are real numbers, and then you're anticipating extra on top of that?
Is that one of my transfers?
It says here, police department expenses, and, yeah, and then 953.
That number right now is just what's negative in his account as of today. That doesn't include the bills that he's referring to, I believe that he gave the Finance Committee. Does those have?
Yeah. And then there's one other one.
Maintenance, 953. The 953 was, Dave, that one that we had talked about with the, in the maintenance account? And I had submitted a transfer. So I believe that the Finance Committee already acted on that one a few weeks ago. The $953 one.
Well, there's, there's not a good chain of passage of these documents around. I mean, I rarely get a final, if it's coming out, if it's coming from the Finance Committee, there is a document that we have. They fill it out, and then, and then.
Well, the Finance Committee fills it out, but the way that they've been passing them along is through the minutes. And the minutes have, because they've been, had transitions in members, they hadn't, they weren't on top of the minutes. So we're trying to set it up so the reserve fund documents that are actually submitted by the department heads with the attachments and then signed are actually given back to the town accountant. At this point, up until recently, that wasn't happening. They were just, you were just finding out through the minutes.
Well, two times ago, two meetings ago, I have the Finance Committee, and on that night, they voted to act on that $953 outstanding balance. At that, the Finance Committee had told me that they will now meet with the town accountant to talk about other sources of funding to take care of some of their requests from my department and the fire department.
They haven't spoken to me yet. And I, and I think Diana and I both agree that we want to see bills as quickly as we can. Because then we can track it as we're going between now and the rest of the year, and not have departments hold the bills because they either don't want to bounce, or they don't want to disclose it, or whatever it is. So we're going to try to make a point of getting that across, that we really want to see and want to.
And these bills that I'm referencing are bills that have already been paid throughout the year, which have now created a shortage that I face with since April.
One thing we're also going to try to do, because, I mean, the one account that looked, I don't know, I mean, I guess I have no necessary basis for this. But the balance in the wage, in the police wages is $86,000. And so is, that's a lot for one month.
We also have a, like, career incentive payment that will be coming out next week. So.
But all, I'm not saying that it shouldn't, it would be nice to be able to have that as a source to buffer some of your other accounts, if that would be the case.
Yeah, I'm not expecting that there's going to be much left in that. If any.
Okay, so are we settled on what we did with the meeting two weeks? With the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Jeffrey Alashon?
Can I, are there any questions about the library line? Because I have two trustees here. These were expenditures that came, due to emergency repairs for the furnace, but they happened before I was hired by the town, so I can't really speak. I have given all the documentation there, the receipts, and have communicated, said that the furnace was working, we had to get it fixed. But since I have two trustees here, are there any questions on the part of the board?
Is there any chance you could get this from some other funds in the library?
We, if you see, the total amount of the bills were there were well over $2,000. I'm only asking for $1,200 because I skipped on top of all the existing municipal funds that I have. You know, I can't take out book money. But the challenge is that we are required by the Commonwealth to provide 19% of the operating budget. That amount, we have to buy books and materials for now. The town, given the budget that the town gives us, we can't take 19% of that and buy books. We wouldn't have electricity for the lights, we would, you know, we wouldn't have a pace out. So that comes through our trust funds and gifts that people made to the library. So I can't take out of those funds to pay for the furnace, because I wouldn't have money to buy books, and then the state shuts down. These bills are already paid. It's just a matter of the $1,200 finishing up the customer this year.
So we don't have it then as a negative number? We have libraries, we have 1,220, that's right. So request to see attached, okay. Any other, any questions then of the library director and all the board members?
Here's a question, while we're on the subject of furnace repairs. Are we pooling those, are we looking for a service contract on these things?
I think three.
Yeah.
You know, for all the buildings we have now?
We're starting to think more like that now with our buildings, especially with this building having more complex systems. But we hadn't up until, until now. It was, each building manager would procure the services.
Yeah, which is, you know, we could get a contract rate probably lower for all these buildings than, than everybody going out and finding their own.
I would even worse to sign up to that, to do the facility.
Well, this board could move then, authorize Diana to send out an RFP to that intent.
Provide service contract for all the town buildings that are, we have, everybody's got gas heat right now?
That's an Ed question. I don't know.
Who doesn't?
We don't.
Highway's the only one that doesn't. So we could include all the.
I wouldn't include Highway because we're very antiquated system.
No, but I'm saying.
And we supplement it. We have two bars, waste bars, and we would waste a lot of our.
Right. But the, but the school's on gas, the town hall's on gas, fire department's on gas, I would think. And then library. And we, it isn't like we burn only a little bit of gas. We must burn a lot of gas.
Well, here's the other thing, too, is, I don't need any electricity. You need to draw your attention to oil, gas, and other different services. They're often, but very minimally.
Yeah.
Which is, years ago, it used to be zero. And having to do the routine, routine check filters, it's coming in and giving you a watch clock.
Right.
You have service always in check. And they do that because they're a missing, they don't help.
Right. But we should investigate.
Right, would you give everybody's feedback about how their service contact?
So that everybody makes the same phone call in the dark of the night when the heat goes off.
And they care about that.
Right.
May I address, please?
If I'm reading this correctly, sir, from McCormick Allen, they came as a noise from a boiler room. They checked it, and they oiled it, and they recommended to replace the bearing assembly. And they're going to give you a vote on it?
Correct, that's the building March 30th, 2011. But you're leaving that away.
Yes.
So Berkeley had signed this with the acting director, and I spoke with her before I came over. And she said that the parts, what was it now? McCormick Allen doesn't deal with this part. And so the president of the company, who stopped at the bottom and said, "We need to do more research, but we don't want to do the research until we have a commitment from you that we're actually going to replace it." So in the summer, when your boilers are working, because we don't have the heat to come in, and that's what we'll do. So that will be part of our routine service that will get done in the summer. We don't have to vote for it, but it'll be paid for by the 412 funds, anyway. That answer your question?
Yeah, yes, it did, but, okay, so they got to do more research on the problem. Am I correct? Would it behoove us to take the people that originally put these parts in? And we should get that easily? And if they're dealing with the same product, that, that might be more beneficial to us than just going to McCall, McCormick Allen? Who doesn't deal with, they're obviously not familiar with this, and they don't, they don't deal with it. Do you follow me, the product?
I'll have to defer to the trustees. I've only, I've moved in here.
Oh, boy, you know, with me. I could just say that we switched to this provider because we had such unsatisfactory service from the people who originally came with the deal.
Okay.
So I, I mean, we could do a little research, but I.
I was unaware of that fact. I didn't know.
No, we.
Okay. Now, the people that you were using, were they the ones that originally built the building and put this in?
I can't, we need to get in here right this morning. I am not sure.
Okay.
But we had them, I don't know if they put in the system, but they were part of the program from the beginning.
Sure, okay, good.
But they were not very good at getting the system on. I'm very, just.
Ed, can the library go directly to Hold Your Gas and Electric as a customer? Would you all be willing to?
Why, they're just saying yes, all right. Yeah. It's a service provider.
Would that be a possibility to try for?
If you have any problems, call me, and I'll call them, and I'll bring them in.
And Pat Moynahan is a citizen here, used to be over there at Hold Your Gas and Electric. He has some contacts as well.
Well, we have Jackie here. Her husband is the superintendent there.
He's the supervisor in the service department.
For gas?
Yeah.
You have big influence there.
Let's check in our history.
Yeah, right, so that's a great.
Our life here is a gas company, especially the old town hall. It's always been, they came in a lot of times and gave us a lot of money. And they were good parts and stuff like that.
Okay.
They are the, I've had them for several years since I switched from oil to gas. And all you can call, they have emergency service 24/7. And they come out sometimes, and there's not even service being called certain times of the day. They have a very low rate, other than that. They get emergency service a lot cheaper than anybody else in the industry.
I can't really speak to this knowledge of them, but I know we have a very complicated system. Overly complicated system. So we'll have to.
It's worth a try. All right. Thanks very much. Thank you. Okay, moving on then, if there's nothing else. We are now at approval of minutes for March 15th.
Where are you going? Where are you going?
Thank you, David.
Sign your contract. Maybe we could do that, and then you could leave.
No. Dispatch.
How are you? Do we have minutes?
There's no effective session for that? Oh, yeah, there is. Oh, David, we need to look, David don't go away yet.
Yeah, he's got his contract, he knows.
Okay, so moving on then, March 15th minutes. Couple pages in. Make a motion to accept the minutes of March 15th, 2011.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Because I was late, I'm going to. Am I about late? I'll say aye, because that makes a quorum, because Jackie won't hear. Okay, moving on then. Payroll warrant, okay. If you wouldn't mind, reading the payroll warrant right here.
You can read the payroll warrant right from here. You just click payroll warrant.
then...
Okay, payroll warrant, number P 11-48 dash 48, 236,000, I mean, 236,9677 cents. Question regarding Christie's letter repay vacation, Diana has call in town council.
So move to aye, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
David, we don't have warrants.
In favor?
We have the bill warrant.
We need the bill warrant, we can have them upstairs, we're upstairs, we need those.
Okay, so we have a bill warrant that we're going to hold off on David, I'm not going to get it. Okay, this now brings us then to PCFs and PRFs and other forms.
Yes.
Sir.
We have two here.
Okay.
The finance committee hasn't signed on our two weeks, uh, they didn't have the forms or anything to sign it, but we got one person, um, who's been waiting for paycheck for on, uh, several weeks.
Right.
That should be authorized as soon as possible. This is a worker that has been approved, and, uh, the money's there and everything, and I need to make sure that's loaded.
Then you would go back to the finance committee?
I have to.
Of course.
But, uh, they have no form, they were supposed to be here tonight.
Right. So, we're just another step on the way.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, you have to file a step, but I would go back to the signatures.
Before you...
But I don't want to sign it, but they have, they have to sign it, so, they have a problem, so they just didn't have a meeting.
Right, if we needed to demonstrate that they didn't have a problem, that's the only thing, so.
Finances, those are your distinct positions.
Yep. Okay. So, we need a motion to approve, so move to two.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that provides all that, the finance committee hasn't signed on those. CBA clerk from finance committee, or town accountant, so David's on his way back, Keelson.
Thank you, sir.
That's David Keelson, he needs to get back here too. So, David, we have two things here, one is the bill warrant, and...
I think that's a lot more actions.
Yep. That you believe you're bringing, and also, we're going to sign your contract, if you will, in open session.
I have that, I've brought the warrants up ever, so, assuming, you, you know which would be that.
Yep.
So, first.
This is yours.
So, do you want to read the bill warrant?
Yeah, just read the bill warrant numbers here. So, we have a bill warrant.
W 11 dash 49, 6211, 341,862 dollars and 71 cents.
So, move to approve.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on then, to what is technically the town accountant contract, it's in the form of a PCF, personnel change form, which is the abbreviated form of a contract, and this was approved at town meeting under the line item for the wages, so, um, this was approved, so what it needs to do is go through Personnel Policy and Procedures Board, PQB, and what we need is a motion to approve this. So, move to...
Second.
Does any further discussion? For those in favor?
Mike, can you hear us?
Yeah.
You can hear us?
I'm doing pretty good, I can hear you each time.
Okay, moving on, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, this...
Happy, happy to be able to do it.
Recognizes David's voluntary contribution since January 1st of 2007, so we're in your debt, sir.
And you, and you have his contract, you're gonna...
We technically, I haven't seen it, correct?
Um, there should, I believe there's an original, it's meant to be signed, um, it says if all parties agree to be signed during open session, so it should be in there, I gave an original copy.
We have police officers, dispatchers, we have the energy, we have confidential, couldn't be in there. Employment agreement, yes, it is, okay, that's why. Okay, in addition, then, obviously, to the personnel change form, which you just signed, this would be a signature of the contract itself, which has the same terms. Any questions, discussion on this?
None.
Move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, I'm sorry, I was just in the wrong folder. Okay, moving on. Town administrators' report.
I had a written report, but I just, just quick updates. The investment grade audit, we're, um, gonna be kicking that off tomorrow, we're gonna have a meeting in the morning with building managers and representatives from Siemens, are gonna start touring the buildings, um, to gather information. Um, we have finished our FY 10 audit in its preliminary state, and this year, um, in order to address some of the issues that are in the management letter, we've asked the auditors to come and meet, um, with the affected parties in the management report, the things that, the issues in the management report to address, and that's scheduled for June 13th at 9:00 a.m. We scheduled the Public Safety Facilities Committee, the, the initial organizational meeting for that is June 15th at 6:00 p.m. And I wanted to let you know that we talked previously about the floors in the town hall, um, needing to have additional treatment in terms of wax. Um, the school committee agreed to allow the custodians, um, at the school to do that for no charge, so we're making arrangements for that, and hoping that it'll be done either this month or hopefully by the end of this month. So, I just wanted to let you know. So, we will be, we won't move all of the furniture, but we will, you know, all of the big spaces that we can clear out, we'll do that, we'll do the corridors and the offices as much as we can. And then after that's completed, we can start on a, on a maintenance plan for the floors.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I had, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, we're now down then to the third bullet in action list, which is vote for single precinct, per census 2010, there's a certified vote in folder here, and that keeps us under 6,000, is my...
6,200.
Sixty, that's right, 6,200, for some reason.
Yeah, I'll give you a call.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? The net of this is that our signature would indicate that we wish to stay in one precinct, and hereby request the Secretary of the Commonwealth to prepare a single precinct map on our behalf.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
From your debt. And if there be no further discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, while we're still in the action items, this is the signature page for that, we also have the ambulance bid, and this has technically just been opened, is that correct?
Yes, we opened it, I believe, on May 25th, May 24th or 5th? I can't remember the exact, let me tell you, I have the exact opening date.
You know what, what are we gonna do with that? Are we gonna, you're gonna accept that bid? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Because in light of the fact that it's not on the agenda, and the recent article in the newspaper about voiding issues that are not specific on the agenda, I would suggest we table that if possible and put it on an agenda.
Well, this, we went up with the first time, this company submitted the highest bid on that one there, but because of the technicality, in the write-up, or we had to redo it, and, uh, the company almost didn't move back to bid on that, and after the last, after the open bid, except for the goal that they had the lowest bid here, they were looking to pick the ambulance up that day or sooner, uh, there, I, I just feel that if we fool around with them, we could lose these people, and I don't think we're gonna get anywhere that far.
Fortunately, I'm not talking about fooling around with it, there's a big push on amongst the Attorney General's Office to clamp down on things that are not on the agenda, especially executive sessions, and if there isn't, if it isn't on the agenda reasonable, so the public can reasonably understand what's, what we're doing, even in executive session, they've, they've voided the vote on South Hadley for Gus Sayer's raise, for one thing.
Plus, they also fined him $5,000 for one, one...
So, you...
Fire work is a technicality, because a particular element wants, uh, already, uh, set it back off because of the technicality, uh, but they're not the Attorney General, kind of that Attorney General's Office, see if that's...
Well, it only becomes a problem if someone makes a complaint. It only becomes a problem if someone makes a complaint.
They won't take a proactive decision out of the AG's office, they will only respond to complaints.
So, so if we sign it, they could lose it in the final analysis if, if it's not done properly.
Well, yeah, they're...
I would move to bring this up next week and put it on the agenda.
I only call your attention to the, the issue if you were gonna execute it.
I read that, the open meeting, it was very, getting very tough.
Okay. I'd second Doug's motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to table this until the next select board meeting, and with appropriate advertisement as to the content. Those in, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
What was the bid, by the way?
Can we disclose that?
Aye.
Can we disclose that?
Yeah, the bid's open.
Yeah, it's open.
35,001.
35,001?
Wasn't the minimum that we wanted was $40,000?
Well, initially, I didn't, uh, for that number, because we didn't have a budget.
Of course.
The average price of the individuals out is $10,000, and this company here was trying to push me up a little bit to get a little more money out of it, and that's why I suggested the minimum of 40,000, which we didn't think was a problem, they even honored that, but when they did give me that, and Diana checked with the Attorney General's Office, they said, "We probably should go back out and rebid it, uh, that's something that, you know, so we're not gonna back out, that's why we're gonna back out to bid." They still, and then, they were 35,000 first time, they gave us 35,001 this time, just to make sure they got the bid.
Okay, so we'll review that in the next meeting. Okay, now we have the Hampton Ponds Association Parade information for the July 4th parade, starting at 10:00 a.m., and we can RSVP to participate or no, or not, we can have a float, a marching unit, or a band, 10:00 a.m., July 4th, which is a Monday, starting place would be Hampton Ponds Plaza on Route 202 in Westfield. Mini floats last year, there'll be prizes, trophies will be awarded for best floats, best marching units, best decorated bicycle, wagon, or doll carriage. Would they like to hear from us by June 25th?
I am on vacation.
Do you still have a bicycle, a decorated bicycle?
No. I have the tricycle.
Make a motion to table it.
I'll be there, I'll go.
You'll go, good, good. I withdraw the motion, thank you.
Chief Hyde's up, got his hand up.
The fire department has been going there for many years, so, uh, we, I can...
You can ride with the...
Yeah, right.
You do, it's fun.
So, Chief Hyde, you would be participating as a float, or a marching unit, or a band, or...
We, we bring fire, we decide.
She rides the fire.
Okay. So, then we need a motion to RSVP as we will attend, or not.
Yes.
A motion, Jaclyn will represent the town?
Special representative.
Okay, that's your first question. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So, RSVP that, that Jacqueline will be representing the board of selectmen, that's right?
Riding maybe in the fire engine?
Make sure she gets the sash.
Oh, I, you know, we, I found the sash, too, when we were moving, I found it.
I was only, I was only fooling.
Well, it's not a sash, I found that big sign.
Oh, geez.
She'd need another person on the other side.
Okay, the last thing is grant application for highway superintendent, for Jan Storm has been signed, I'm looking for that here, should I have that as well? We have that?
It's in your packet, um, that's what you signed earlier this week, Jess, and Ed's here, if you need any explanation on that, but...
Oh, that's right, okay.
I believe it was to access the emergency money, right?
Right. Um, it was for the January 11th, 12th, 14th, uh, we're eligible for, uh, $37,000 for material labor and reimbursement. Of that, FEMA will, uh, they came in their audit, and they'll operate 75% of those costs, and now it's supposed to be 25%. So, we'll get the check for, hopefully, before June 30th, so it doesn't affect our free cash for 27,690,000.
And how much are we over on winter roads? How much winter, is winter roads overspent?
Um, 52, uh, 56 dollar expenses and 2,000.
So, 58, so we're gonna get about a third of it, a little more than a third of it back.
About, we'll close by half.
Half of it? So, we have to...
Okay, great, thanks, that's right, I did sign that, just to let the board know.
But, um, maybe we should take a vote to, to approve your prior signing of that.
It's a good idea, given the tempo or the climate of the times.
I, I would move that we endorse Jess's earlier signature of the grant.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ed.
Do you sign those receipts?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, charter communications, we've received a $2,500 check for the cost of town council as agreed, and we have sent back the redlined agreement to Tom Cohen.
What happened to, did that 2,500 in our, our calculations for over and unders?
Copy of this contract.
Did that 2,500?
That was to pay the town council.
No, I know, but we didn't send it to town, we didn't send it to town council, it came into us, didn't? We didn't send that 2,500 to town council, did we? That came into the general fund.
Yes, it came into, it came into the general fund, but it was put back into legal expenses as a reimbursement.
Oh, so you just re, okay.
I just, yeah, it was reimbursed back to legal.
Looking around for pennies, this...
So, there could be, you know, there could be some remaining balance in that.
We could hold them off, hold town council off for a month while we get through.
Right.
Okay. Timber cutting plans, nothing to review at this time, new town hall updates, anything on custodial or grand opening?
Senior center we've done.
Senior center we've done, punch lists, punch lists is pretty much over with respect to the DRC.
The only thing that we're, we're still, um, dealing with are the, the screens, they came to put the clips on the screen, some of them are, were sticking out, and what they discovered was when they started putting the clips in and fastening them, the screens were bowling, so now they have to come in and, and adjust the screen. So, that's scheduled for, uh, June 23rd, I believe. And the only other thing that we're still dealing with more, it's sort of a quasi-warranty issue, although if you remember, early on, we had issues with our front door mechanisms, and the company came out, I think, at least three times, and, and eventually attributed it to user error, um, but we, I brought in Florence Locke to do some other work, and he's been working with the Corbin, uh, the Corbin Russell rep, and so they're coming back Friday, and hopefully, we're gonna try to solve that issue with the front door.
If there's a charge on that, that should be turned over to town, if it's a substantial charge, it should get turned over to town council to go after the contractor on that. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Operator error on the front door lock?
I know.
You know, and the other issue is what about what the seniors brought up tonight with the stains that they've got in there? If, if in fact it was wax that went down?
I'm not, yeah, we, we'll, I'll check that. I believe that we have the same issue upstairs and downstairs with the bathrooms that aren't being used, so, it might be something that can just come out, but we'll verify that.
I think at, at the last building reuse committee, if I may, Mr. Chair, in regard to the stains and this and that, uh, we agreed, since the contractor was done with his punch list and that was not on the punch list, to go and negotiate with the contractor, in other words, to try to make his, uh, what we owe him less, in other words, we would do certain things. So, that's what I recall from that meeting, does anybody else, can you recall anything there? Jesse, you remember?
Yes, that's what they, they're going to talk to Five Star and try to work out...
Negotiate down, we'll take care of these little incidentals, just to get, get the thing done.
To complete it, right.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on new town hall updates, or grand opening, do we have any, we've been talking about that.
Been talking about it, I mean, I guess we, I thought we were sort of hopeful the senior center would be done at the same time, but that doesn't look like it's gonna happen anytime soon. I don't know if you wanna, we have had, um, Senator Knappick's offices contacted us twice, asking, you know, when we were gonna dedicate the building, so, and we've had citizens So, and we've had citizens asking us as well, so I don't know if you wanna schedule.
What are the pitfalls or the barriers between now and the grand opening? And one is possibly the opening of the senior center or the functioning of that, and is there anything else?
Just the floors in the, in the main building, which I'm hoping to get done, like I said, by the end of this month, depending on their schedule.
Labor Day? When do we see how we progress?
July fourth.
Labor Day?
You know, for Christmas party, three months.
I'm not referring to the length of time, I'm referring to the day, the last holiday weekend of the summer.
True, yes, Doug has artfully pointed out, people do tend to go away on holidays, but they might stay for this one, this is a big one, but it's all relative. So the weekend after Labor Day?
That would be much wiser as far as.
That's not hunting season, is it?
Why, is there, is there any, I can't remember, is there any kind of fall festival in town, like? I can't remember.
The Old Home Days is the first weekend in August, or it celebrates Southampton?
I'm on vacation again, so.
That would be, that would be a really nice.
I would agree, and that was my original suggestion months ago, that we do Old Home Days, because we'll have people in town who went to school here, who are here for Old Home Days.
And they also annually had to use the old town hall for their story hour, so I presume they'll wanna come here for their story hour this year.
If we were to do it during Old Homes Days, let's discuss this.
What day is that?
First weekend in August.
Who's gonna open the office and store these people in? Nobody. They could just walk down the corridors, everything would be secure.
That's right, too. That's why we discussed it, having it on a Tuesday night or something like that.
So we have a security issue.
Otherwise, he's right, they're just gonna walk down the halls. You're right, otherwise they're just gonna walk down the hall and, in the front door and out the back door.
Yeah.
Couldn't you have somebody stationed there, you know, part of our police department?
If their offices are open, somebody's gotta be in them.
So is there a workaround for this thing? Would the select board be willing to volunteer to safeguard or stand guard in the town hall?
I think there's gonna be offices that aren't gonna trust us.
We don't have enough select board members. Boy Scouts? And then, and what, what? Fire Department?
Well, you know, the kids have to volunteer in order to graduate. We could ask the high school.
But I think you're gonna run into some opposition with some of the.
Departments.
Departments, if you say they're gonna have kids guarding their, their offices, that.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay, then you're not gonna watch anybody in there?
You can't do that.
Unless it's under their supervision. So we're gonna be spending more money that we don't have. So having a grand opening of a building that has to remain closed?
Well.
Seems like a paradox.
Or we have to have it when the building's already open.
Open, that's.
It does seem like a paradox.
But I'm saying, but if you do it on an evening, one, we don't have to run into overtime costs, offices are open. Coordinate something to have something in the senior center to have, like, I don't know, stealing the school stuff, they're not on Ice Cream Social or something, coffee and donuts or something, so that there's access.
I actually asked some local volunteers if they would paint, do some landscapes of Southampton, and receive the approval from Irene, if we could put their paintings up on the wall, that'd be another attraction to get people.
The more, the more we could get in here.
Right.
More things you could coordinate to draw in a couple of people at a time.
So the baseline is that the building needs to be normally open to avoid overtime? What about doing it Tuesday, when we have all the town offices?
I see.
That's a perfect.
Do a Tuesday, Tuesday evening or Tuesday.
Tuesday after Labor Day or after Old Home Days? Tuesday night.
Yeah, no, I think that's, because otherwise you.
You're gonna make it seven to nine, or seven to eight, or something.
But, and, and on the senior center, I mean, are we misleading them to a certain extent that, we know that the handicap doors on the library cost eight thousand dollars. And if they're, seven. Oh, I thought it was eight, seven we gave back, but anyway, seven, eight.
Seven for the doors, they gave us back a thousand.
All right, so, and if they have, I'm only assuming, but if they have to come in through double doors on the back, you've gotta do that times two. You know, if they, it's.
We didn't put ADA doors in this building.
The answer is they're ADA, but they're not, they may not, they may not be above ADA.
Right, the doors are accessible doors. They, there's a certain width and a certain weight that they can't be.
Then there's no step, there's no threshold.
Threshold.
They're ADA. This is above and beyond ADA.
You know, we, we told, as far as I was concerned, I saw priorities that were, I thought were priorities. But if we can't get to them at this point in finances, we simply can't do it, and that's all there is to it.
You know, the, the thing that has to be pointed out, and I hate to be the one to do it, is we took them out of a very dingy basement, unsafe, unsanitary, uncomfortable situation, and we brought them to the first floor, and we've given them some new appliances and that. And I'm, I'm gonna pay for this dearly at some point in time, but that, this is what we've got, and this is what we can do. We made some choices along the way, and unfortunately, that's some of the choices that we made.
I think as a result of tonight's joint meeting, we're moving towards that game plan, also understanding what their limitations are, which we didn't necessarily know about due to the.
Well, and the biggest one is that you, we got a septic system that's not gonna take it.
So we're gonna put together the game plan, at which point we'll have to present also what we can reasonably.
But what, isn't the game plan in fact in place, that we need to get that kitchen installed and be done with it?
We first have to get a variance from the Board of Health to do that.
I agree with that. This is a little late in the game to be calling that in.
Okay, so back to the grand opening then, it's getting less grand by the minute here. Does anybody wanna propose a Tuesday night? Just sometimes if you put a date out there, things kinda happen, you know that a lot, right? You just set a date out there and stuff, stuff happens.
See, Tuesday night, how many people are we only gonna get to? Time for you, Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday's fine. I, I mean, I think we have a lot of people trying to.
Would that be reasonable two months from now?
I, I, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable, because by then, I think you're gonna have, you're gonna have to have that senior center resolve. And someone has just gotta commit that this is what we're doing.
First Tuesday.
Explore the alternatives and it's done.
First Tuesday in August?
Good, I won't be here again.
I think Tuesday evening is a good idea.
Sure, I mean, we can start, you know, putting the feelers out and see. I mean, it'd be nice to have the committee, the original project, you know, the architect and at least the project manager, and then the, you know, we were hoping to have some legislators, and they seem to be interested in coming, so. But I think that's as good as time of any, as any.
Well, what about, they, the office staff doesn't work on Columbus Day, right?
On what day?
Columbus Day?
No, that's a holiday.
So pick the Tuesday after Columbus Day, because the building would be closed the day before, they'd be here on Tuesday and. Kids will be back in school, so people will be back in town.
Leaves will be turned on the trees.
And hope, huh?
Yeah, leaves are turned.
Leaves are turned on trees, maybe we can get the kitchen in by then. And they can serve cider and donuts and.
I think that there's a certain, not liability, but a danger threshold we need to get across.
Danger threshold of what?
We could be, not assassinated, though we think we need to get that done.
About what?
Probably get them in by July.
No, no, I, I'm just saying by then, we know they're in, and frankly, there's gonna be some bugs in that kitchen no matter what you do. We already, you know, let's face it, we already know there's bugs in the building, so let's give them a chance to iron out any problems they have in the kitchen. I, I, I'll speak up, I'm gonna make a motion that we have a grand opening on the Tuesday after Columbus Day. Huh? From five, five o'clock on?
Five o'clock, yeah, even better.
And five to what, eight?
What time's, what time do offices close, eight?
Yeah, five to eight.
Five to eight.
Man, there's a suggestion, next week we're gonna have the council agent in here, I'll be the one to give them the bad news. Because I was on the building reuse, I will be the one to throw the hatchet down and say, look, as, as long as we get by this Board of Health bologna, we do not have money to lower the cabinets, we do not have money to give you a three-sink, and we don't have it, what are we gonna do?
The only thing that we should look at carefully is whether or not the, the either, the architect or the builder made an error. If, and if they didn't make an error, then, and we got what we paid for, we're done.
That's why we need a game plan which incorporates those issues.
But it should be fairly easy. I, I mean, I think the obvious is there. We, you know, I don't think there's any, if the architect missed a toilet seat or a, or a panic button in the bathroom, I thought they all had to have them, but maybe.
There is, there is a panic button in the bathroom. There is.
The kitchen, the kitchen was deleted from the plan, the, all the finishing of it. So if we can't bring the architect, I'd love to, but we can't.
Can't.
It's our problem.
Right.
And we've got to solve, but it's gonna take time, and they've got to understand that.
But you don't wanna hold up the kitchen for that plan.
We need to do the same kinds of things, but.
Well, we've got to schedule things to be in, we don't, we don't have twenty thousand dollars.
Well, actually, David Kilsom was saying that there were some funds that were.
But that's the money you're gonna need later on. You're already fifty thousand dollars short on winter roads. You're gonna need that money to cover winter roads and all the other things that are gonna come up.
But you can't have any safety issues either.
But I would suggest, a little bit off topic, what we're considering right now is a vote on October, the first Tuesday in October.
Five to eight?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to that. And we suddenly got backtracked to what may or may not happen. So, is there any further discussion on the grand opening?
None.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Have a date. Okay, no one has any further objections, then we're going to go into executive session. Any further items? Tom, do you? Thirty seconds. Is there a vote? No. Meeting before the town meeting, Jess was not here, and Mike was not here, and, and Jackie and Ann and myself went through all the warrants with Diana. I don't know what happened at the town meeting. We looked terrible, we looked terrible, we looked like a bunch of amateurs. We didn't have people, this is my consensus of what it was, if I'm wrong, you tell me. We didn't have people that had warrants on there, they didn't stand up and say what they were supposed to, they didn't even show up. And then for some reason, we didn't act on a lot of things. And I walked away from that meeting saying, what happened to us? Or did I read the whole thing incorrectly?
No, we had this discussion several, maybe the last time I was chairman, five, six years ago, we said we were not gonna put any town meeting warrants forward unless there was the department or whoever was sponsoring the, the article had someone there. If it weren't, no one stood up, we were just gonna pass it over, and you're right, we do look like idiots when we do it.
We look, we look like.
If we don't know what's going on.
Who cares assholes, that's what we look like. We look like cats. Who cares more than one flower?
There were three or four articles that we covered and we shouldn't have, because we didn't know completely what we were talking about.
Chief, do you have anything?
Yeah, I could add a suggestion, and perhaps some insight from my observation. Historically, the select board always had a meeting prior to the annual town meeting awards. We reviewed the warrants and we invited all the department heads to that meeting, so that any questions or concerns or uncertainties could be aired out and addressed before the town meeting. Last year and this year, that didn't happen.
I move that we have that meeting before the next annual town meeting or special town meeting, then a memo go out to department heads, and we have a meeting to go over the articles.
Yeah, I strongly said.
And if you're not here for that meeting, your article doesn't, gets passed over on the night.
I never wanna look at that again. Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
So I'm gonna call you back, that's not on the warrant, the agenda tonight, so that should get.
That one.
And so it should get tabled and brought back on another night, but we should do it.
Yep, technically, we're gonna move to table or vote?
Yes.
So you need to move to.
I'll move to withdraw my motion until it's properly addressed on the agenda.
Second.